This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Iva Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls here. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Tolls to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Most Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come and serve you today. We pray for the city of Gaston, we pray for the city council, and we pray for all of those that are in attendance. We pray that whatever we say and do today will be done decent and in order. We just give you all the praise and all the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work sessions and city council meetings held on December 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 5th through the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor. Unfinished business. We have one item. Item number 8A, the nuisances on property located at 1109 Fourth Avenue in District 5 have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed at this time. Okay? Item number nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 511 Allen Street in District 1. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Alfonso J. Bothwell, and wife Geraldine Bothwell. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of 2012. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1606 Baker Avenue in District 1. Emma Jean Rice being the last known owner, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a garage apartment. We started it in January of 2013. There've been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak in favor of it? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 919 South 12th Street in District 5. Anatra A. Hale being the last known owner, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2013. There've been no improvements to the case. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
That's in my district, and I know the House, and I have not received any word from anybody that's affiliated with the House. Is there any way that house could be reclaimed or anything?
Mr. Billingsley, we look at each case once we get a resolution. If we feel like there's, that the house could be rehabbed, then we'll notify you. That process has to go back to the council anyways.
Okay, gotcha.
Hey Brian, while you're up there, let me ask you this question. On a rehab house, that we think that's one that might be rehabbed, do y'all check the mortgage summers is owed on the house before you rehab it?
Yes.
And that's where you go by, if it's worth rehabbing by what?
Well, we use the title search that normally either the legal department or an outside firm has done for us. I mean, first things first, we want to save the house if we can, and then we'll look at the ownership.
I didn't know if they was a lot owed on a piece of property. If we were more owed on, it was really accident worth it, we would go in and rehab it. Being that much was owed on it, that's my question again.
We normally don't get into that as part of the issue. We look at whether or not the structure can be saved. Typically, if it needs a new roof system, we won't touch it. You get into some, and then there again, we'll look at the inside of the house. If the inside requires too much, there's no need of trying to dress up the outside then, so, but we look at all indicators, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 715 Dodge Lane in District 7. State of Alabama, Robert Beck Jr., and Sharon Freeman Beck being the last known owners, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution?
Mr. Skip, one.
Yes, Mr. President, skip number 12.
Yeah. Okay, we'll come back to it. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
This is Dodge Lane, correct, Mr. Beck?
Okay.
We started this case in October of 2012. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Yeah, move to abate. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Reverting back to number 12, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 308 Kaiser Street in District 6. The state of Alabama and Jimmy Lee Owen being the last known owners, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in August of 2012. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
As we pass the pictures around, you can see, while I'm in a hurry trying to move some of these houses out of District 6, by looking at this one here, you can see.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Clerk, will you take the vote? I'm sorry, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1212 and 1214 Hope Street, from R-2, One Family Residence District to O-1, which is office district. The rezoning was requested for the purpose of marketing the property for office space. Opponents expressed concern a development would have on drainage in the area, and a petition favoring the residential zone containing 73 signatures was presented to the planning commission. The commission unanimously recommended the council deny the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance?
Mr. President, I think there's a gentleman in the back that might want to speak.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I was in Ford. I thought it was him.
Sir, please state your name and address.
Good morning, Mr. President. Robert Brown, property owner at 1210 Hope Street, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the signatures of the 70-some-odd residents that signed, asking to remain residential R-1. We believe at this time there's too many unknowns about what type of commercial development will be put into that neighborhood, and if a master plan could come forward, or a developer could be found, we're open to entertaining a proposal at a later time. But with this current proposal, we ask the city council to deny the proposal to move to commercial and leave it as residential R-1.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I would like to point out, the applicant did contact my office this morning, and due to some physical problems that he has right now, was not able to be at the hearing. But David Clayton did call, and I'm sure he would speak in favor if he could be here, so.
Yeah, and he did take the opportunity to reach out to us, as Iva has mentioned, so we have an understanding of his position at this point, I believe. The ordinance has been presented today for a first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3281 for sidewalk, curb, and gutter. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to James E. Watson Sons Contractors, which has, which was the only qualified bid received. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crossroads Boxing Gym. This is for a lease of a portion of the building adjacent to the former Weaver Tech Building located at 1505 Campbell Avenue, and the amount is $1 per year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing renewal of agreement with the Edgewahl County Board of Education. This extends the agreement until December 1st, 2015, that allows the city to undercut the property adjacent to the parking lot of Hope's Bluff High School as a source of dirt to cover the city's inert landfill. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I can say a little bit about that. We had a call a few months back that we were building a road in Hope's Bluff, which was not true. The landfill, we have to keep it covered with topsoil, and they needed to get rid of some out there, the Hope's Bluff, the county, whichever one owns that, I believe. But anyway, and we've been getting dirt out of there for probably over a year, it's close by, it's free, and we get it out to cover our landfill, because it has to be covered every week.
Yep, so win-win.
No roads in Hope's Bluff.
Any additional discussion? Okay, well, there's no other discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing agreement between the city and the state of Alabama. This is for the state to reimburse $15,000 to the city for rail crossings at Church Street and Shattuck's Drive that were closed. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Those were closed a couple of years ago. We're getting our.
That's a good thing. All right, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two. The first one, I'd like to ask you to announce consent. It's awarding bid number 3282 to Outback Trailer for recycling trailers, in amount of $1,275 each. We're going by 40 trailers, and the total amount would be $51,000. And these trailers are six and a half by 10-foot long, we're going to use them for recycling.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider this resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I think Ms. Tolls brought up a good question this morning about where they were going to be located and where. And she was answered, I believe. Mayor, were you?
We're going to put some in some schools. We haven't definitely got, but we're going to spread them around. We're also getting a four-wheel-drive pickup truck, and I think a baler. I believe we're getting quite a few things with this grant.
And I think they also need to know the items that are going to be recycled.
Cardboard, paper, and plastic, I believe.
Once we get these trailers and get them in places we're going to be, we'll have a sign on each one of them, tell us what can go in each little compartment. We'll have all that stuff ready. It's probably going to be 90 days before they finish the trailers, and we're probably looking at 1st of April when we get this plan started.
The mayor brings up a good point about the baler being donated, because what that does is it helps to compact the bales of cardboard or plastic, and to increase the weight, which at some level increases the rebate. So that's important, because it's money coming back to the city to help pay for the program. Okay, any additional discussion? All right, there's no more discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have one more to ask you to announce consent, please. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3280 for Dataronic Control Incorporated for a digital sign for Knockalittle Falls, and the sign will be 120 by 240. That's a pixel pic. It's going to be 10 mm on that. It's $35,677.45.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, what we're doing here is moving the, we're getting a new sign for Knockalittle Falls Park up there. It's a bigger sign. You'll be able to read it better, and it's going to be a whole lot prettier sign. And we're going to move the other sign, which there's nothing wrong with it, down to Alabama City at Reagan Park, down where everybody can see what's going on in Alabama City.
Commissioner Carolyn Parker helped us in Alabama City, and that's a smart thing she wanted to have with some things on that.
We do appreciate that, Commissioner Parker's partnered with the city on a number of projects, so we definitely appreciate that from her. Okay, there's no more discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, committees, boards, chief?
Since I've become chief of police, I've stressed the importance of partnership between my department and the community. I think part of building that relationship is knowing what my department does, and I just want to take this opportunity to let the public know that the Gaston Police Department has a ride-along program. If you'd like to come out and take advantage of that, you could just contact my department. We'll inform you what forms, procedures, and instructions are required, for y'all to take advantage of it.
Thank you. Can I say something? I'd like to say I took advantage of that, and you all don't know what police go through when they are out on these patrols every day, and I know we have a lot of disgruntled people about certain things, because if I was getting a ticket, I would be disgruntled also. But a policeman's job is very, very serious and very dangerous job, and I think since we've got this chief, he's done a lot to alleviate some of our fears. It's not perfect, but it's better than a lot of other places that I've traveled to. So I want to commend him for the things that he has attempted to try and do for our city.
Yeah, and I think the vast majority of us have participated at some level in that ride-along. Some of us more than others, I guess. But it's, I think it's important to note, to restate what Councilman Billingsley just stated. I mean, that's a very difficult job. When a police officer shows up, typically something bad has happened, or somebody's violated the law, and at least one party in that discussion is not going to be happy. And so, you know, that automatically makes their job very difficult. So, you know, that's not to make excuses for officers, but it is to highlight something that needs to be stated. They have a very difficult job, and so what we have to do as a city is make sure that we take a balanced approach and bridge the gap between the community and the police department. And I think programs like this, along with some of the other community-oriented items that the chief has engaged in over the years, are a step in the right direction, for sure. Mr. Eckles?
I think we need to continue to try to do something concerning the Civil Service Board, too. I mean, there's not, I don't think enough conversation between the council or the mayor. I don't know what the mayor, he can speak for himself, but there's not enough between the two, and I'm not sure that we get what we need, and we need to continue to try to get it under the mayor, because it's, that's the way it is, and 99% of the city's now, and we're one of the few that has to go through the Civil Service Board to get some of the things we like done, done. It's awfully hard to determine where we're stepping on their feet and they're stepping on us, so, I mean, it doesn't need to be that way, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's a very good point, Mr. Eckles.
Councilman Eckles, I hope I'm not wrong by what I'm fixing to say, but it was back a few years ago when we was looking for a police chief. I think one of the Civil Service Board members told me we wasn't allowed to speak to him. Is that correct, Mr. Billingsley? We had a discussion about that, what didn't one of them say we wasn't allowed to have any input and speak to him about anything like that? He was on the board at that time. Yeah, of course, you have to take this individual that said that, you have to take him into consideration. It's like anything, there's going to be some people that's going to have negative things to say about anything. But I do agree with Mr. Eckles, there needs to be a better communication with the Civil Service Board, because I was on there for about almost five years, and there are a lot of hard feelings both sides. Well, I don't know, I can't speak for this side, but from that side, there were a lot of, and really, they don't have any, you don't have any recourse for anything that they do, and I just don't think that's sufficient for when you're paying the whole bill for That's just my opinion, and of course, I was on the losing end of most of those decisions, so.
You know, I was there in the audience that night, and that person told, told all of us, said, "If you open your mouth, it's $500 fine." Well, I didn't open my mouth, but I really wondered who in the world was going to try to collect, you know? I mean, you got two or three ladies up there, and you were sitting up there.
Yeah.
Of course, I figured you could take me in a hand, right?
Nah, I couldn't do that. I couldn't do that.
I checked them all.
Councilman Reed, I was just wondering, when they said that, what councilman had $500 to bail him?
Well, now, that could present a problem, but my wife usually comes to my defense, so I have no problem with that. But while, we're pretty close to what I was going to say. If the chief has opened a door for people to come qualify and ride with a police officer, I've done it on Saturday nights, mayor has, I know a number of us have, when you go to sleep at night, or you're sitting on the side of your bed, you go in and climb in and go to sleep, and it's only because those police officers are out there running this town, because if people knew what was going on at the dark in any city, I don't care where you are, you couldn't go to sleep. But we can, because these are our first-line defense, and they're out there every single day, and at night. And that's what I do, I appreciate them to the fullest.
Yeah, I've learned a lot riding the night that I did a couple of years ago. You know, and on the Civil Service Board, I'm just speaking for me as mayor, if somebody else is eventually, and whatever, but I would never want to be oh with the man. I think you just need to be oh with the chief, and maybe the command, sort of like the sheriff has. You know, that's the way they have it set up. It's a little over $20 million budget, and basically, especially if you get the wrong chief in there, we don't have any say about anything. Nothing. And so, it's just, it's the only one in the state that still has that set up, but, you know, we got a good chief, so that helps a lot.
It helps tremendously, and I, again, the mayor's hit on a very good point. We're either the only one left, or one of two, you know, and, you know, and that either means that the rest of the state's getting it wrong.
I doubt that.
Or we're somehow out of bounds. So it's just something to consider, you know, and this is definitely not a slight against the mayor, because he would echo this, but I think it's something to be stated. When you ride, and you look at, when you ride with these officers, and you look at how much ground they're having to cover, you know, we just don't have enough of them on the street, and, you know, and that's a financial question, something that we have to consider, you know, every time we do a budget. And then, you know, Councilman Billingsley spoke to the, you know, the legal ramifications of what happens when an independent board makes a decision that then ultimately has to be financed in defense by the city. You know, I can tell you that if, at my house, if I had an independent group making decisions that they didn't have to defend later financially, you know, I'd have a problem with that. I mean, I would, I'd really struggle with that, so, just something to consider, and, you know, and the chief, you know, God bless him, he sat in front of a, he helped- He helped to facilitate a panel discussion, or participated in a panel discussion here in the community not too long ago. And, you know, that discussion was rife with people, you know, essentially raising incidents that they've had with officers in the past. All very unfortunate incidents. But, and I can tell you that we, you know, we've had chiefs here that would have never said yes to that invitation. They would have never even given it a second thought.
Right.
But he stood there and heard the community, didn't always give them the answers that they wanted, but he gave them a response, and I think that's important. And, you know, he's not paying me yet to say any of this, but I just, I think it's important to point out that he's been very deliberate about making himself available to the public. So, you know, just please, please keep that in mind. And one last thing, you know, again, I think we beat this horse enough, but the one thing I want to encourage people to do is file complaints when you have incidents, because if you don't file the complaints, then we don't have the data to respond to. There's nothing more frustrating than to have a conversation with somebody, and they're talking about an event like it just happened last night, and it happened three years ago.
Five years.
Five years ago.
Ten years ago.
We had a number of people who were claiming incidents in 2007, and the chief said, "I wasn't even here in 2007. There's nothing I can do about that." But, you know, if you, you know, we like to make decisions based on facts and data. And stories are fine, but facts and data are so much better, because they give us something tangible to move on. So file the complaints. If you have a legitimate concern, a legitimate complaint, file the complaints, put your concern on record, and then it gives the chief an opportunity to respond.
You know, I do... One other thing, I do think it's really helping a lot, since we've put the SROs in the schools. I've been in several of the schools, and officer maybe be sitting at a desk, and all the kids come by, and they're all giving him high fives, and I think that's been a really good PR thing for the kids coming along to have, think they have the friendship with the police, and I wish they do, which a lot of them don't realize it.
Absolutely. Mayor, that's a great point. This council was very clear when they spoke to the superintendent of schools last year, I believe it was, about the SROs and the funding. This council was very clear. This council wanted at least one in every school, and I don't think we backed off of that at any level. I think we're still pretty firm in that we'd like to see one officer in every school. Okay. Any more discussion on that one? All right?
One other thing I'd like to say. If you know of any minority that would like to be a policeman, the chief and this council is open to interviewing those people. We need more minorities on our police force and our firemen. So if they're available, he's willing to interview them, and we need them.
And there's nothing illegal about actively sourcing for minority and female participation. Let me say that on the record. Nothing illegal about that. Okay. Let's see, if there's nothing else for departments and committees, we do have one citizen request, Mr. Lewis Fuller.
Good morning, President, Council, Mayor, Iba. Good to be here this morning. Councilman Reed, I appreciate your standing in for me last Wednesday and announcing. And what I'm here about, and with the Theater of Gaston promoting, last show of a good, successful season. It's kind of a silly, lighthearted thing, a good old-fashioned redneck country Christmas. We opened this past weekend, and we have three more shows at 7:30 Friday and Saturday night, and a matinee is coming Sunday afternoon, and to kind of maybe help you get in the spirit of Christmas. Like I said, we had a successful season, and we've got our new season announced. We've got six shows we'll be doing. The Curious Savage, Camp Rock the Musical, 110 in the Shade, Leading Ladies, Miss Firecracker Contest, and An Evening with Edgar Allan Poe. And again, I appreciate all the support that the city gives the theater, and wish y'all a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, could I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
They really do a great job. My wife and my daughter, we went to see the To Kill a Mockingbird at the Ritz a couple of months back, and they had, on a school trip a few months before that, had been to Monroeville, where they put it on professionally. You know, ever so often, the schools go down and see it. And they told me the job y'all did was equal to what they saw in Monroeville, right here on Wall Street at the Ritz.
Thank you, Mayor. We're down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor, you want to start?
I'm talking up.
Councilwoman Toes?
Just keep walking on those walking trails. Mr. Cannon, I don't know if you've been on there, but you might need to walk a couple of miles on the Watley Trail.
Mr. Kim.
Ms. Toes? I was going to be nice today. I'm still going to be nice, but last Wednesday at council meeting, I sat beside you at lunch, and you had the same thing I had.
Mr. Eccles, okay. Councilman Wordle?
On Friday, I went to Atlanta, to Phillips Arena, with the Decker Club and the FBI from Gaston City, and the kids learned a lot, and they had a great time. And we stayed and watched Atlanta Hawks basketball game against Orlando. So I just want to say thank you to the school for inviting me, and the teachers. We all had a great time over in Atlanta Friday.
Okay. Councilman Billingsley?
Last week, I went and walked the trail that Ms. Dr. Toes did, and it's... Being out in the wildlife is different, and... But I enjoyed it. I wasn't out of shape or anything like that. But it's a... The Falls has a lot of things up there that's just unbelievable. So if you get a chance, go by there and see what they've got up there. It's just wonderful.
Thank you. Councilman Cannon?
The only thing I got to say to y'all council members that's been up there walking it, y'all apparently don't know that Mr. Watley has a four-wheeler, and all the rest of us rode on the four-wheeler. I'm through.
He didn't tell me that. He said, "No, I'm going to bear a budget of that."
Councilman Reed?
I do want to talk about the other side of our first line of defense, and of course, that's our firemen. Sometimes I think we appreciate them, but when you see them in action, when your house is on fire, you're going to call a fireman, you know? And if you have a wreck, you've got your medics. So I just want to let them know that we do appreciate them, too, and know where they are. They're our second line of defense, and they're always there. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything today, so if there's nothing else to come before the council, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Second.